First item on our agenda is for approval of the minutes. Eighty twenty second and I see one request that I'm asking for a change. Those people who were in attendance, if you can also mention it, Tom Douglas was here at that meeting. And he was here at that meeting. Yeah, so I'm gonna ask that his name be added. Are there any requests or any other changes? Yes, but I'm not sure if we've done now or during discussion. Uh, did it change on the minutes or did it change? I think it's changed. Okay, well, we, in the minutes. And if you want to live. That point, I call it two shifts on North Third Street. He mainly is New York, LLC. We discussed at that meeting. Whether or not they needed one or two services. And we, we voted, we discussed it and we entered it. However. One of the things that fell out of that, that I never saw was. Okay, now hold you right there. Okay, if we never saw it, you weren't, it wasn't discussed, then what's that? We would have been in the minutes of the meeting. Okay, therefore, if you would like me to cover it, it will be in hand after we're done with our agenda today. Okay, and I think that would be the appropriate time. Okay. Any requests for a lot of further modification of the minutes? They're being done. I would entertain a motion for approval. I'll make a motion. And so we're gonna do an all in favor. Which in terms. The item on our agenda is an application by. Tully Squid Eyes. This is a site plan amendment. Uh, for an addition from the existing colleagues at the town center, Jack's number eighty seven dash one dash twenty one. Is there somebody here on the end of toes?
Yes, Dave Schlosser, shop clerk.
That's, hi Dave, are you?
Yes, it's a bit of your meeting. That's the meeting that's, that was just another meeting.
I've been having issues with it, so hopefully everybody can just use what they have.
You do have a thumb drive?
I don't have any more ports open. Sorry.
You've all got drawings.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So, uh, and drawing, the initial drawing you got there was basically is T one. It shows that the, uh, Tullys, as I think most of you probably know, is centered. The, uh. It's on a one point seven acre parcel in the center. It borders on, um, North Fourth Street. The property is on regional shopping. L one one. This is a strange way to do it. Basically shows the existing, uh, parcel. The building is six thousand one hundred and forty square. The main entry, public entry faces North Fourth Street. The, um. Receiving and freezer coolers are in the rear towards the west. Currently, the restaurant seats two hundred and twelve with no outside dining. Um, and no guide show. It's a full service restaurant. The, let's propose, let's show, uh, your drawing. L one two. Is we will remove a small section of the building, approximately a hundred fifty square feet. It's a. We will see rejection of the bar. This one's the original pizza. And, uh. Frankly, what said, the, they're currently using the Uno Pizza's bar. The actual physical bar is very tight. Aggressive and not consistent with Tullys, and that's what the expansion is serving the purpose for. So what's proposed is to add a thousand, one thousand fifteen square feet. Along the south, um. Uh, side of the building. The, uh, and along with a rear cooler, that'll be approximately two hundred and fifty square feet. The site will not substantially change other than in the area of the addition. The seating capacity will increase from, um. Two hundred and twelve to two hundred and seventy four plus sixty two seats. The parking, uh, will be reduced from one hundred and three to ninety four minus nine parking spaces. We are still well over the one to five seating. Um, requirement for, uh, the goats. The front yard set, the front yard setback is currently ninety four feet, eight inches. Uh, we'll reduce that to ninety three feet. And the side yard, which is to the south, is fifty seven feet. Um, thirty eight, I think that'll be reduced to thirty eight feet and eleven inches. The, uh. We've given you, uh, an elevation, called elevation of the proposed addition. That is on, uh. Drawing, um. A two zero. The, uh. The addition, which is to the right on the, uh, the bottom elevation. As you can see, basically, it's being done to the same materials as the existing building. The building is, um, basically a combination of brick and split base block. With a, uh, clad, uh, windows, aluminum clad windows and awnings. The addition is gonna be constructed of the same materials. The addition is sixteen feet plus or minus feet high. The existing building is approximately twenty two, depending on which elevation you, you take for height. The, um, outside cooler, which is shown on the top elevation you have. Will be, um, fully enclosed, um, with a screen wall. Open at the top, but basically the screen wall will be done from the split base block to match the existing building. And then we've also given you, um, a planting plan, uh, to, um, in front of that. So essentially, the, the cooler, the new cooler, which opens to the, um, kitchen, will be, um, pretty well masked. We've given you the plans of what the existing restaurant interior is, and then we've also given you the proposed plan. And again, uh, what this does is it basically increases the size of the bar from seating of, um. Approximately twenty to, uh, eighteen, sorry, to about thirty. Changes the orientation of the bar. The bar will be entirely new. And then it adds additional seating around the bar. It also increases the, um, maneuverability around the bar. Typically, you park off of, uh, six to seven foot clearance. Uh, with the, with those screens that they have. It's really relatively congested. I'm sorry for not being able to get this.
So am I. So am I.
What questions can I ask?
I just had a question, just curiosity. You work for Core or for Tullys?
Or for Tullys.
But the plans are for Core.
The plans, the plans that we, this second here, um, have, uh, we actually submitted documents that they basically authorized. These to be submitted under their app.
Yep.
Um, the, um, we actually worked with Colleen Hanson before, um, back and forth. She was gonna be here tonight. She basically was not able to make it, but, um, she basically set the course forces. The elevations, as that were, they were through, we've been back and forth with them through a few times as to find materials.
Okay, that's, you're getting at the question that I was interested in knowing.
Yeah, we've, um.
Is Core on board?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's an addition.
I, I saw, yeah.
But, but beyond that, uh, we've actually submitted two or three variations on this, for the, there are. Um, and, uh, we've modified and modified it. And right now, basically, it's fully on board. Just continuing.
Thank you. That is a good question.
On the proposed site plan, um. Looking at the parking that's on the south and in parallel. Um, I have a concern that it won't all actually fit, um, and usable. If you look at the one that follow the way to the east. It would be near impossible to get into that spot if there's cars in the under core.
Uh, those, those spaces are actually extra long. We made them twenty three feet long.
They are, but that still would imply that, and that's typical length for, um.
You, you are talking about the parallel.
Yes, yes. Um, ten by twenty three is a typical length for a parallel parking space. However, that implies that the person would be able to, um, pull up and then be able to pull it in. And if there's cars in the other space, perhaps say that that car pulled in first. And then another car pulled in behind it, it wouldn't necessarily be bad.
Okay.
Um, just because the curb line comes up, so if, if, it doesn't end, so in a normal line of parallel parking. The edge of that ten foot would be continued.
It's obvious.
So, I, and it's not as big of a problem on the other end because there's a strip area. And so I would suggest that maybe eliminate one of the spaces. And shift them back over and center on. Um, because it doesn't appear that you're short space at all. Based on the two hundred, um, square foot calculation as well as the one to five that's in the.
Yes.
So, if the curb were straight and a car could pull up and tire, then. So, um. I mean, if, I would throw out there for consideration that maybe those spaces don't even need to be there and that could be fixed. That landscape new strip could be extended into the entry, and that could become a gateway install.
You could prefer not to do that. We really would prefer to keep parking spaces. Tullys doesn't need the parking spaces, even though. Even though you're required, there's only fifty five. They have employees and everything else that is. We can, uh, put employees on this particular side of the building.
That part, I mean, I just was throwing that out there as a suggestion. If you felt you had more than enough, then that would be a great spot for that. But I think that being getting rid of that one should be more without that situation. Then I had a couple other questions, so, um. On the plan there, what is the, um, use of the door that's coming out of the additions?
It's an exit door.
Exit.
Right, the exit, Owen.
Okay. Were you gonna put any, any lighting on that?
Uh, there has to be, yes, there is.
A wall path.
There's a wall naturally.
Zach, I didn't see that on the, on the south decorative.
Uh, we will be putting wall path on there. It's a requirement for an exit plan.
Okay. And I'm not up on what code is for that. Does that need to either have something over the top of it or a step down?
It does not.
Um. So would that, also, I'm not familiar, whether that would be a handicap. Grant?
It does not. I mean, actually, the way it's designed right now, it will be, um, actually, it will be active at a level.
Not over the sidewalk.
Oh, it does not. It's a secondary, it's a, it probably just needs a. And just anybody.
Well, the next one, ready, John, for, I think that would be the driver.
Like a, like a three by three.
Yeah, we're gonna be right now, we're probably need to be able to, if it's gonna pick us up. Pick us up. That's what we've got is basically, we're right in the sidewalk. This could be a new sidewalk. This would take a drive to.
Okay, that was just a question. And then on the detailed streets, um, which is. Point one. Um, the, you wanna miss, um, in particular, I think, a species that is on the list, the state list. Of invasive thinking. Would have to be swapped out. And I, I do have some general questions about the details, um, and the grading plan. I didn't see a, a grading plan.
There isn't, there isn't a grading plan out there because basically that site is entirely flat. Uh, that particular area. Um, and, uh, the, uh, we're, we're keeping the existing parking lot raised as, as they are. Basically, all we're gonna do is slope from the restaurant condition.
Okay, um. I mean, I guess it would be more comfortable if you saw some meat and existing notes, some, some general sheet notes on here. The grading's not addressed well. I understand that you're just gonna cut it in, but, um. Some spot grades, maybe at the, at the, you know, at the door where it needs existing. Um, you know, those kinds of things. I don't think it needs full blown contours or anything, but. Um, just some general spot grades to show those types of things and, um, there's a type of base in there, so I'm seeing, you know, what the. How that's gonna connect to why I'm guessing all the grading and ratings, you know, are made the same. Um, but to have some spot grade, that'd be really helpful to understand that. And then. With some of the details, this is something I think we need to talk about it for separately, but, um. You know, I'm seeing asphalt detail number five on H two point one, just showing eight inches of gravel base for the asphalt pavement and I'm. You know, that's type two, and then there's type one, and I'm not seeing where those are specified on the drawings, you know. Which is which? I'm guessing that you would be using type one in a drive lane and type two when on parking. Bay, but I'm not really sure, and eight inches sufficient of gravel. Gravel, without knowing what you're using with your definition for gravel.
Well, basically, those details are put on there, uh, contractually, because basically what they're be doing is cutting the existing driveway. And what they've got really is just patched. We do not have any new asphalt per se. Uh, so other than basically where they put the new curb in, there'll be a patch area in there.
Okay.
And, and the gravel, the gravel is already there. Um, so we'd be putting a maximum, depending upon how they cut it, somewhere around eight inches of additional base.
Okay, I'd really like to see a detail for that. Um, just standard details because these don't really correspond to the plan. Um. Um, you know, that could be done on the, the concrete one as well. And then there's not a separate concrete or detail. Um, I'm not saying to provide contract documents, I want to make that clear, but, um. And I understand that standard detail will be applicable in this situation, but, um. You know, the ones that are shown here just aren't really representative of the work that's seen done. And, um, we just, it's mostly for durability concerns, it's not for. Might be there at this point. And, um, we would like to see, or I would like to see, uh, stone mulching detail. Um, that goes around plantings. And the planting detail that's shown here is a representative of the, um, the type of plants. Meaning deciduous, there aren't any deciduous trees in, on a personal states. I did a little bit differently as well as there's shrubs. Or, you know, shrub bed type as well, which I'm guessing.
Number seven?
Yeah.
Detail number seven?
Correct, yeah. Those are my comments. Thank you.
I had a question about the survey along the addition. Um, starts out on both sides of that five feet. Sidewalk, but then when it goes along the, the addition on the south side. Mark two feet six inches, but I will then receive. But I'll, I just wanna make sure you think that's enough.
It's not, it's not continuous. Stop at the beginning of the building. That's what it shows on here.
They're not gonna be walking.
No, it's not concrete, but in that two foot six inches. But it's just a mulch.
Is that gonna be the stones, the stone mulch? So they have to walk in the rapid, if they wanna keep walking around.
If those are customer parking areas, most of the customer parking is on the north side and towards, uh, Verde.
The rest of, it's like, the sidewalk, it looks like the rest of the stones going around.
On the other side, is it going? Yes. There's no, uh, Core has no requirement for us to have a continuous sidewalk.
I know, they don't.
And, um, quite frankly, we've got a, um, uh, water easement, a downtown kind of water easement right there. So we cannot increase that, um, for five feet. We don't anticipate that in use for custom.
From that, possibly W A.
Uh, no. We just don't wanna interfere with the.
I have a negative thinking there, there are reasons.
Definitely can't, but you can, you can probably put a second one.
So where are the people entering? In the emergency aisle?
No, the entrance, here we're receiving is.
Oh, they're in a long.
So they enter now.
It would make sense if it was possible. Especially the drive, two way, drive for car use. I don't, I always wanna see increased walkability in some somewhere.
Well, you have a minimum, you have a minimum requirement for, uh, aisle width for, for the driveway width. We're giving you that, and I, I really. If I basically change.
Yeah, unless we get rid of, unless we get rid of the parking. We kind of change and change the fact that everyone.
That one's the parking eliminated.
We, we basically, I hope. We've done all the Tullys and stuff like that, and they say that they use all the parking.
Yeah. I think it'd be a mistake. That's how it is now.
It's all the same. There's ninety degree all the way. I mean, you can go to angle there, but you lose a one, you lose the two way.
We actually looked at angle parking and basically it's, uh, another particular site. Um, we came to the conclusion that it's a little confusing. Depending on which direction people are coming, whether they're coming from the very side or the other. To basically put that one row in angle or not.
Yeah.
All of the front and everything like that.
Cause you get people coming this way and they, they need use, or that you could, they come this way and there would be a conflict. Cars, so either, I think, please stay. And as is shown, minus one. Or if a sidewalk is super important, then the sidewalk comes out around the building. The curb line gets realigned and it comes around, you know, like that, and you lose the parallel car.
What's our, what's our setback in this, though? Zero?
Is there a data sheet on?
There's a, there's a side yard, that's considered side, I didn't have the conditions beside it, so.
You, you could, you could pull that apart and see what the. You could.
Um, I might have a little trouble, Corey. That's one of the major places.
There's only like five feet.
Yeah, that's, that's a major.
We can't, that curb line can't move anywhere south.
Don't have a curb line to operate. See the parking. Probably a quarter or two.
Then we have, we have the curb line.
I don't. They can't really be able to, or changing property rights.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying. And we work within the boundary.
I'm just concerned that, just going, I have, and it's totally, it's going there before. Are, are you gonna mark the parking, employ a parking? I know because of where the entrance is, I feel like customers are gonna wanna park there and then they're walking. Through the driveway, sidewalk, or the crosswalk. I just, unless you mark it and, and for that, I think, customer, it's supposed to be the door in those spots that are. On the north side, way up on the north side.
We can change that aisle to twenty two feet, then I've got four and a half feet there. I'm not opposed to basically. Uh, yeah, basically, concreting that. Give them, uh, with a six inch curve that we gave before. We, yeah, right now, basically, we're showing an aisle of twenty four feet eleven to the parallel parking. If I reduce that to twenty two, twenty two and a half. The, the driveway area, then that gives me an extra couple of feet for a walkway. And I can get a four foot walkway in there.
I'm fine with that.
That works, I mean. The vehicle or traffic. The vehicle or traffic is going so slow, it's not.
Yeah. Get off the car passing, we think that's been having going too fast. I think twenty, twenty. And for the few parking spaces over here, you know, to pull that curb out. Um, and squeeze in a narrow walk there, I think that's, that's.
I think Jamie's point, I think, that's the traffic in this location. Is a concern. We, where, where will this pedestrian? Lost there.
Get switched down a little bit.
Okay.
And this curb line would come out a little bit, to maybe squeeze a small sidewalk one of those.
Things that.
And that's an idea, you can have a plan.
So we basically, after such, we'd be over there twenty two feet.
We just need to.
Do we have this, the aisle width determined by code?
I thought it was twenty four feet. Just general.
The one on the, on the east side is twenty three.
Yeah, they're very. Is it the, the way it's stretched right now, they're not varying.
But our roast, it's gonna be, so. Yeah, I guess London. Our roast, I heard. Questions, anyone?
Why do you need this to be so long?
He really wants some. We suggested it, he wanted to take a lap. That's correct. Are we, from a town standpoint, um, the, um. The, um, the owners and also Core, we basically, we had diagonal parking, we had out parking. And, uh, I didn't get determination that it's many parking spaces we can get in there. Um, you know, comfortably. And I think we've done that. Uh, again, if there's an issue with clientele as far as the parallel parking. They'll have the employees park there. They generally have thirty-some employees on a. Any other questions?
I've got a question for you. Am I to the fact that we're gonna be. And, um. And eight-two point one modification of. In fact, this is the as far as we can, the tree brackets. Um, what would be your timetable to be able to get that back to us with modifications?
Days. They, yeah, we have to be in construction because, um, the one this issue is football season. Big garden.
You can do that within days. That's true. I think what we need to do at this point is schedule a public hearing relative to site plan amendment.
I wouldn't say it's the deadline, but if you can have it in me by Thursday. I'm sorry.
About the. The next meeting.
It's Wednesday. But since I know you're coming, you can have it Thursday if you want, by noon.
Wednesday. You can have the changes made. There really aren't a lot of changes we're talking about here. It'll take us less than.
Okay. I'm Wednesday, it's fine. Um, June twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth? This Wednesday.
Yes. Yeah.
Public hearing sent by Dan, Alon Tabor, and I, any followers? Motion carries. We're on for June the twenty-sixth for a scheduled public hearing.
Do my laptop. Giving a video work. I'm able to get into the meeting, basically.
Yeah, I, that's why my laptop, that's not working. I don't know. I'll fix it.
I think, thank you, Diane. I guess this looks like it's gonna be a nice edition.
Nikki, now more relative to a change or a local policy. We can provide this with a graph. Of a new law. Town code enforcement officer is answering the media net. Uh, good to, uh, one of the. Well. What happened?
So actually. Have to put it. Quite a, quite a, a list of comments in general, um, and I can talk to you Lisa. So. I don't. I'm not generally opposed to a maintenance. Um, ordinance. But. I feel like this really needs a rewrite, to be perfectly honest. Um. You know, I, I'll, I'll start just going down through and, and definition to be stuff and. The definition here of managed natural landscape. Um. These, a lot of these are very specific terms that are being used either accurately. Or. Are, are implying things or leaving things out. Their implications that can be looked at differently, so. Um. Managed natural landscape, they plan intentional and maintain planting of native. Or non-native. Non-native. That's, you know. How are we gonna define that? It talks about invasives, noxious weeds, like all of these things are, are very. Particular in their definitions. What about existing? Natural landscape? You know, existing ones aren't mentioned in there at all. For instance, if you've got, um, a woodland meadow area on your side of property. Um, for example. So. Then wildflowers, orbs, ferns, shrubs, trees. You know, these are, these are all specific terms. Um, but not limited to rain gardens. And then one of the things that that makes me think about is this doesn't address. Stormwater management areas. Because a lot of the stormwater management areas. The planting requirements for D E C require and are used specific types of. Plantings that. Serve specific purposes with regards to runoff volumes, runoff speeds, all of those types of things. And they then become part of the natural landscape that is managed. And that could be construed as something then that appears to be a noxious weedy area and has to be mowed. When in fact, it's serving a very valuable purpose as far as runoff. So, you know, that's not addressed all in. Um. Ornamental plantings, well, there's a lot of ornamental plantings. That are planted with invasive species. Or, you know. Things that really shouldn't be there and then. We come down a little bit further and these are just some examples, right? And then prairie plant communities. We don't have prairie plant communities here. This was copied and pasted from something that is not relevant to our area. Um, and then native in quotes is used in the paragraph. So that's another definition that should be brought out and is being embedded within another definition.
Can I, can I just jump in just? This is more mobile than what you're talking about and that is whether or not. The board feels that we need to have. A, a law that dictates ten inches, which this is.
Yeah.
Um, is, is the number. And then, and the reason I ask that is because what gives us the right to go on somebody's property? To maintain. Whatever the growth is, whether it's, you know, part of what you're talking about or not. What gives us the right to do that? And I think you're gonna tell me it's listed in the yes, that it's health and safety. Correct?
So.
Okay, so what makes nine and a half inches? Okay, but ten inches a problem? Where did that come from? What's the data?
Actually, there is a background to that. Um, and all.
Okay, that, that's great.
Well, I can explain where these typically come from, right? So now back up into this managed, um, natural landscape part. It, it seems that native as used. Um, any vegetation listed in the New York Floral Atlas and it gives a website. Well, the New York Floral Atlas is part of the New York Flora Association and that is a. Bunch of people who put together a list. And they are funded by dues, donations and gifts. So I don't think it's appropriate for us to take a definition of native. From a group of people who are putting together, now a lot of it is qualified for sure, you know, they're come, they're not, it's not all bad, but. You know, I don't think that that is the point that we need to use as our definition of what's native in our area. The D E C, the federal government also have these types of lists and there are a lot more. And that's not to say that we can't come up with some that are maybe even a little bit more appropriate in our hotel, like E S F might have some stuff that we might wanna reference.
Um. Aaron, I guess my, my problem with this whole thing is. People have property rights.
I know.
And what, what we're saying with this law is I'm coming on to your property.
I'm not disagreeing with.
And I'm maintaining, I'm gonna do something on your property. And there's nothing in this document that talks about liability or. No, I mean, all these, whether or not. It doesn't matter what the, the growth is in my mind. It's what gives us the ability to go on somebody's private property to do something. And, and I don't fully understand why we need to have this. And we already have New York State law and other things that give us the right to maintain this, whether or not. We agree with the types of growth that's on the property is in my mind irrelevant. I wanna know. The law that gives us the right to go on to somebody's personal property. To do some. Okay, okay. Yeah.
Um, so then we get into the noxious weed stuff and it's listing, if referencing a list with this, um, the U S government list is, is. The accurate one for that, but there are, like I said, the Velso state one, but that gets updated regularly. So referencing a specific. Thing is not necessarily a good idea. Um. When we get down into the weed section again, it comes up and uses some terms that aren't really actually terms like. Rush, dryers. Those aren't. Those aren't real things, right? Those are. Slaying on, if you will. And excluding trees and cultivated vegetation, some of our most invasive and inappropriate plantings are trees. In fact, there's a lot of stuff that has been removed from commerce that you can no longer buy and plant from nurseries because it is found to be extremely invasive. Um, you know, and there's tons of documentation of that type of stuff. Um, so that, and weeds is a very tricky word because a lot of weeds are really for pollinators and things like that. So it's, it's a really touchy area. Some things people can read. You know, it's a, that's a very gray area.
I think we just need a law or something so I can go in and mow the grass. Take care of properties that are.
But that, but that opens up, but that opens up, you can't just say go in and mow the grass because. What is, some people consider to be a, a, a lawn that's out of control, but it actually be something else.
Then why are we going? See, this is my argument. Why are we going?
I don't disagree that having ordinance for places that have not been maintained properly is a bad thing. But I think that it has to be very carefully written and I'm wondering why it needs to be there. So when we come down to the, um, compliance requirement. This ten inches typically comes from the New York State Property Maintenance Code, which you can find online. It was last revised, I think, in twenty-twenty. And they use, um, the ten inches and I don't. I don't know that that's the appropriate height. I think, you know, I've seen a lot of, I've seen a lot of these and a lot of the other ones will say like twelve inches. Over a half an acre, it can be eighteen inches, whatever. It really depends on the species and what they're trying to do with this is to prevent. And this answers your question, is to prevent the spread of invasive species. To prevent the habitat of things that can hurt people like ticks or, um, rodents, you know, they, they're thinking about rats and stuff like this in the city and, you know, that's where a lot of this comes from. And then there's the aesthetic. Point of it too, which I think. You know, that's a very tricky area that we would be, be really, really careful about. Um. And then, you know, I think as a group, like we're said. How do we de- decide what is, what is a hazard to the public? Um. There's some other things on the, um, the last page in the service of notice. You know, it said. Notice shall specify, um, the work, well, he completed within the time allotted in the notice. Um, and then, but above that, it says not less than ten days of the postmark. But then there's somewhere it gets mailed, but then it also gets delivered to the property here. And so the timing of all this doesn't really make sense in a way it's explained. And then it says ten days after the service of the notice. The town basically can go in and do this kind of stuff. Um, but. When it really should be the amount of time that's included in the notice. You know, so that doesn't make any sense. And then. When it, the actual cost of such cutting should be basically tied around the taxes against, you know, or levy. Well, there's a very big. Open and intention there because. Going in and mowing a lawn is one thing. Going in and brush hogging is another thing. Going in and removing piles of brush and debris is another thing. And who's gonna get to decide who gets to do that and how much they get paid?
See this.
Is it something that's done by wage rates, prevailing wage type stuff? Is it something that the town has a contract with a company that gets done and that is bid every year like?
Exactly what you're doing.
These are the questions that I have. So that's my breakdown of it. I don't think it's a bad idea to have something. I think that this is not good.
My question was, it's really quick. Um, was about the ten days. Is that ten business days? Is that enough time? Um. For the. Property owner and the town. My other question is, does our code enforcer? Have the ability and the time to enforce this?
We've got like two properties that've been waiting months on, they don't have any way to.
I mean, once.
Yeah, I was wondering if we have the resource, the resources to do that.
Because this is.
Well. From what I'm hearing. It almost sounds like Erin has made an motion. That we not approve the section that is written. There's too many qualifications, there are too many definitions, there are too many issues outstanding that needs to be, you know, redone and modified. Would that be a fair statement? Could I ask you a motion?
You wanna be a little more specific to the town board about just, just a few things, so the, the. That this, um, the board does not recommend that this be, um. Accepted, um, in its current form.
It's a poorly written document. I hope I don't offend him.
I would be less.
Yes, but remember, if you really want the town board to listen, you need to be. You know, a, a lit, more specific.
The definition of managed natural landscape.
More.
Well, then there, the, the terms are not accurate. And it's maybe, I mean, there are errors and omissions that. They should work in. Um, and the, um.
In the wording.
Yeah. And then somehow we say that the, um. Referenced. By some, of data that. Are inaccurate or spelling complete and. One, one word. Other, but also. Need one, I mean, donations. And then. That's inappropriate. And then I feel that we may be able to find additional resources like. That are closer to them that might work like. If that were.
Anyone have any idea what the?
Yeah, code enforcement office. It's asked before. Actually, it wasn't code enforcement office. It was the Director of Planning and Development has requested this. We don't have one. So that is first, that's the first line I read when I started. Somebody's looking for cover. Because they want, they, they want to have a document that says I have to do this or I don't need to do this. And this is what was put together.
Um, it, it's.
Well, I almost feel like it's.
But, well.
It's not that easy.
Well, I would say, uh, I, I heard this as well, the overall invasion of property rights versus. Uh, we, the, the necessity.
Yeah, it, it should be defined, what constitutes a hazard to the public.
Define.
Because somebody just thinking the grass is reached ten inches high. Doesn't make a difference because if those grass species are ten inches high for a reason. Because there's specific grass species that are doing a specific purpose, then. So be it.
There's a lot of, also, there's a lot of common, uh, land areas in the town, like. You know, major.
You know, major waves and divisions. How would this apply to?
Getting pushed and. You know, I don't, mowing stuff is not always the best. Having things done with a little bit more eye sensitivity of the environment and the things that look there. It's not always the answer to just try and make it look pretty good from mowing.
And to that point, Erin, the New York State Building Code is a perspective, I'd say I'm not. It's open to interpretation just for that reason, right? So, you know, in, in a lot of communities where you go out and you look at an issue, right? These species that are in that, that lawn area, you know, may, may be the right height, eighteen inches, they may be. The right height at two inches, but it's open to interpretation to the codes officer to make that determination. If it needs vector control or, you know, it's damaging a property or well health and welfare. And that, that's the way the code reads when you go in and read the code. It's open to local interpretation. Just for that reason, right? Because the issues in Long Island are different and in Saranac Lake that are different than Jamestown that are different than that.
We have a question as to why we would. We refer to the New York State Building.
I think that's what it should be, the, the code.
Question we have at the board.
They don't. They wait until there's complaints and then this is what they do is to.
I can tell you that a huge hundred thirty neighbors. A lot like basic, but at least now it's really. Uh, we've got grapevines all over the place. We've got common um. This is the worst tree in the world. I said, absolutely, I'm like, I mean, this guy's been pissed down before I had a change of.
This is the D E C's list um of invasive species. There are animals. And all sorts of stuff, but, and northern maples are not a great thing. Red maple is much better, but like, there's. There's a lot of things that I think could be done differently. And that's my opinion.
So let me, let me um tell you what I've been writing. Uh, this board is not about to remember this legislation accepted in its current form. This definition, because it's scrutinizing in terms used are not accurate and needless to their errors, omission. Definitions, you know, in particular definitions, the reference data are incomplete. Um, and that time is inappropriate and that specific number. Now, regarding the context for this legislation, it's unclear. For example, why does the New York State Building Code not allow to address this issue? The uniformity of enforcement is a concern. The overall invasion of private severs assessing better defined reason. What is actually hazardous needs better definition. I have a last word in here. This board requested the town board to use the comments of number eight.
I mean, I, I don't even think we need to do that. The last piece I would add would be about this. The last bit about um. There be the, the service of notice part, how there's inconsistencies with the um communication. Inconsistencies with the plan of communication of violations. The in inconsistencies in the plan of communication. It's not for sure problem when you think. When you get sent to where we can use, they think you did something wrong with having a public. But we don't know until the property has a problem.
More discreet, I mean, the code was about. By its hand, so this is how it must be done.
Well, it's, it's not the better enough and it's.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Erin, second by Richard. We also gave that motion incorporating a change of this. Okay, we have a motion made a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Lisa, that's what we'll inform uh the town board.
Okay. New York State law saying. Why should they need?
And that's a good question. And to delineate under what circumstances.
Because somebody wants to make a promise.
It's like the thing across you that you're probably up there, it's been like that for a couple of years. Why can't they just go in with the New York State law and cut along? Because that's trash. I said with the law.
With the law. And they make it very expensive. And this make, this law or this, he goes law makes it more. Yes, okay, I think we're all set on that.
So I mean, why can't they use it and play well?
Well, you'd have to ask on that specific property as home enforcement, why?
They, they'd be happy to see.
Well, they've been asking about two, these have lasted couple of years.
We covered everything I had to share there. Is there any other business? I have something.
No, you go first, Rich.
Oh, you have something to.
I do, but I just talked for lunch, so it's your.
Here's what I have. At our last meeting. Um, we had a very brief discussion about ADP Manlis New York LLC. Which is Lexus, you know, on North Berwick Street. And the discussion was, do they need two lines, one line, they feed off the other line, so on and so on. And we voted and it was unanimous vote to, I think, allow them to have just one line. However, what we also approved, and I did not see at that time. It wasn't part of our package. I don't know if other people saw it or not. With a law amending section one twenty seven twenty six. Which was our subdivision law. And it was definitely on our agenda and you click on it and look at it. But I did not do that. I just picked up my package and Lisa, I'm not blaming you. So it's, I'm gonna blame myself because I could have pulled this and I didn't see it. Never saw it and part of that vote was a recommendation of the town board to approve this law. That they then passed the following ones. I don't know which sentence, what, which makes an amendment to our subdivision law. That says where public water is available to a properly divided lot. Each is an existing lot or lots to be created shall be required to tie directly into the water line. Provided by the Tandook County Water Authority percent subdivision.
Because the Aqua said they're not going to allow it. So they wanted us to make it part of their code of our code, so everybody knew it because they're not gonna let it happen.
My point is, I did not see this prior to the vote that we had. Because it wasn't part of my package for whatever reason. I don't know if anybody else saw it. Or if they read it or they understood it, but I have a real problem with this. And I want, I want to make it known to town board that because I didn't see it. And the vote took place that I'm opposed to this law. Because I'm gonna tell you right now, where the public water is available to properly subdivided, what's that mean? What does that mean?
It means that if the, if it's subdivided. And the water is available from the road, you have to take.
It doesn't say that from the road. It just says, it just says where public water is available to prob- it could be two miles away. I, I think what it's saying is, I think what it's saying is, if you want public water. You can't have more than one service for one building. It shall be required to tie directly into the water line. Yeah, it's not clear. Because in, in, in this case, if I recall. There was, there was one building and there was a second building.
They were gonna build another building.
And they were gonna, they were gonna get the water through one and then through the second. Yeah, I understand that for that, those two lots. This is an all encompassing law that we cast for the entire town.
But the discussion, the discussion we had the last meeting was.
Only involve. No, we talked about it. We talked about it.
And that's what this says, to a properly subdivided lot, each existing lot or lots to be created. Shall be required to tie directly into the water line provided by Aqua.
Did we talk about this? And I, I think Jamie said the same thing she just said tonight was that, you know, this has come up and Aqua wants to make. What, what their policy is part of the town policy.
If a problem happens to the water line, who fixes what part? If the front part has a problem and the back people can't get water, who's at fault? Who's gonna do this? Aqua gets involved? Where do the meters go?
I never saw this.
Too much trouble. That's right.
I mean, it said you must look into.
No, that's just saying you can't. No, no, no.
It, it's not saying you can't, it's not overriding our subdivision law.
You have your own, you do your own task.
That's not how I read this. It says wherever public, where public water is available to a properly subdivided lot. Each existing lot, which means a lot that's already been subdivided, I suppose. Or lots to be created shall be required to tie directly into the water line. So I live on one seventy three, I have a well. If they put a water line down in front of my house, I have to tie into it.
No, that's not how it works.
That's what this says.
Not, no, it's not because I'm in the middle of a water line thing where I live and I know that's not. It's not what that is. That's saying that.
If you've gotten subdivided new and it's available.
Lots, each existing lots. So it's talking about, and I, where I live, they were gonna do a subdivision. And I'm, there's no water line that's coming down my street anytime soon. But I'm just saying, I was lot number one or lot number two, and my neighbor was lot number one or lot number two of a subdivision. So if a water line came down one seventy three, I am part of a subdivision.
No, it's a water district that has to be, that stuff is a water.
Then I'm not gonna say that.
Because that's if you want to put a building in or you want water. But we have people coming for us all the time for subdivisions. They just want, the lady who wanted to subdivide her back paywall. It's like saying if there's a water line there, she has to tie into it.
That's exactly what it's saying.
That's not.
I understand your interpretation is that that, it's not what it's saying, but I'm telling you, that's what it's saying. But, but I don't think Aqua would interpret. I want, what do you got this board to do? I want to get a clarification to the town board. This is law been asked, it's passed. And I want to get a clarification of what does this mean? Where public water is available to a properly subdivided lot? What does that mean? Available, is it a mile down the road? Is it fifty feet? Is it in front of my lot? Is it across the street from my lot? I mean, there, there's no real definition.
Can't just randomly tie in water lines. You, you have to, it has to be formed as a district to do that. Can you explain this better than I can? Like, if, you can't just have a water line and be like, the water line is running in front of my house. Now I'm gonna have to tie into it and pay. It, it has to be, the formation of the district has to come first. Run water line by somebody's house and they aren't in the district and they can't tie into it. And if they decide later they wanna be, then they have petition to be added to the district or create their own district to tie into it.
We just went through a process in Salt Springs Grove where we had a petition. All that area, because you live up that area. So if fifty one percent of the people said, I want to create a water district. The forty nine percent that didn't want to are forced to be in that order.
In that instance, yes, that would be the way that works because that petition project would form a district.
And I think this now.
I, I think all this is saying is. Hey, if, if you want to get water from OCWA, you have to tie in directly with your own water.
Yeah, I agree.
Because, because there's, there are, to Erin's point. When you get into older communities that go back to like, you know, turn of the century. What you'll find is there's a tremendous amount of lost water because. Rich Rosetti built three houses and he bought another one. He owned four houses and he got one water cap from the village. And then they just tied all the houses in and nobody knows what the problem is. And now you're getting to health issues, economic issues, all they go. That's, that's all this is saying.
I want a clarification. If you're asking me what I want, I want a clarification. Is that if a water line is put down in the street in the town of Manlis, that we're not gonna force people to tie into it.
You can, it's, it's not how it works.
I'm just saying that according to the way this is written. How it works and what this is written are two different things in my mind. So I just wanna, I, I want a clarification from the town board attorney or whoever. That this will be amended or changed to make sure it's crystal clear. That if a water line is put down the street, people aren't forced to tie in. Then I'm gonna presume that you're making a motion. I just did. Is there, is there a second to the motion? Any further discussion?
I think that you need to make sure that if there was an instance where it was passed by petition, fifty one percent, that that's. I mean, you can't just say if a water line goes down in front of a property, they have to tie into it because. If it were done in a district or formed by petition, fifty one percent, then they would actually be required to pay whether they tied in or not.
And our discussion right here gives an example of why this needs to be clarified.
And yes, but I don't think that the wording.
The way I read this is if a water line goes down in front of my house, I gotta tie into it.
No, that's not what that says.
It's exactly what it says. Actually, it's the opposite. You have to pay for a tent. And the tent is something that's approaching a thousand dollars a month or you can't tie in.
Yeah, Phil's right. It's about twelve hundred dollars, twelve hundred to fifteen hundred.
We got, we got a whole lot here. We have a motion made by Richard, second by Erin, all in favor. Just the two of us. I'm not hearing you. I, you say, I, we have three. And, and those in opposition.
Can you do a, uh, can you do a? Yeah, that's it.
Roll call vote, roll call vote in favor of the motion.
Could you repeat the motion? Specific language on that.
I would like to have the town board clarify the language that was adopted in this law. State that if a water line goes down in front of somebody's home, they aren't forced to tie in. Because according to this, this is. As I read this, they are. And I know you have a different opinion.
It's just.
We're gonna go on this for the next hour and a half. Erin, yeah, your name.
Erin, yeah, your name.
I guess name.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rich.
Yay.
All right.
Name. Name.
And I'm gonna go name.
So.
I, I just think it's an important issue, because that law is. Not clear.
Four three.
Oh, sorry.
Which says proof.
Right.
So, we go to Lisa, send that on to the town board.
You got it.
I, I don't dare not ask.
I would like to propose that we, um. Either create, or continue, or resurrect something to come up with some design standards. Um, for our site manager process. Um, I asked Doug about it earlier, because I, in looking at some of the applications details and. Plantings and, you know, things like that, I think that a lot of time could be saved for the applicants. Um, so that they would know the kinds of things that we're looking for, um, with regards to durability and aesthetics. Um, you know, to asphalt detail, for example, tonight. If, you know, we could say, we want twelve inches of rime crush under our proposed pavements. That just gets it out there, there are so many other towns that have some basic design standards. Um, and I think we have some sort of informal ones that, you know, I mean, we've talked about with the solar, you want to see it mounted, if not. Or farm, you know, I think this just kind of lets people know, that's what we want to see, that's a difference, that might go under that ordinance, but. We want to see granite curbing. Or matching existing, like the Kelly's tonight, say, when we put granite, they put slip form, or whatever it is, or, you know. Pass-through lace or slip form, whatever, but, you know, I think that these things serve a durability purpose, and they also serve. An aesthetic purpose to the, the underlying tone and flavor of things that we want families to, to.
The way it has great, they're, they're.
I would tell you, it's, it, it's a process. It's a process, um, it, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I.
I think, I think.
Obviously, it, but it's.
I think you need to start slow, with there, you know, there was a, there, there was a big discussion tonight, a couple fronts about species.
Yeah.
Now, that, that's, that's low line proof, in my opinion, right, I mean, that's pretty easy to say, hey, you know, we don't want these invasive species.
Well, we have some very low lines. But, I mean, that's.
We don't have setback requirements.
No, you're a commercial zone.
Oh, okay.
What about a, um, small committee that, we had the solar work group, proposing a small.
I guess that's why I'm.
I mean, that's a town.
And it will, yeah.
But it's, I'm just tell, I mean, you know that, it's gonna be a process, but we're, we're in a very, like I said, the lowest line, we're just. What's that kind of department, any zones?
I see these things coming up, meeting after meeting, where the applicant could be saved a lot of time, and even in some cases, they could save them meetings. Right? For having to come back because they just didn't provide grading on their, I, I mean, that's a basic one. I mean. Nobody should submit a plan for site plan review without grading. Even just spot grades, or re-match existing, like, those are basics, like. I don't know, Doug, do you have anything to add to that? I mean, some of this stuff, just, just no, I mean.
We, we traditionally, what, what we've seen since you've been here, this has probably been the most of the commercial. Seen in a long time, right? There's not that much commercial in Manlis. So predominantly, if you look at the code, to Jamie's point, Manlis code really, really sways towards residential. So that's why you don't see some of this stuff, because really the only commercial areas are over here. Um, you know, we had the church that was redone, we had the business park that was redone along ninety two. And then two ninety eight.
You know, and I, but maybe there'll be some redevelopment, there's a lot of, you know, things on the, I don't think. I think that if there's gonna be a lull in this stuff too, because we've even been seeing a lot of it right now, but. I don't know what's gonna happen with the economy and the way it wanna do business, but I feel like. Why sit around and wait, it's gonna take years to do this, we might as well start and work on it. Because if we keep talking about working on it and never actually do it, then eventually it's done. And some of these things do extend to subdivisions, and the way that we, you know, what kind of pavements do we wanna see? I mean, I know that, that Rob Scott, he probably has things he wants to see, but like, um. How do we meet up with the villages with regards to design standards? How do we make those not so harsh, and, you know, are there planting, you know, things that we want to see? And, I mean, it can, there can be a lot of details that come into this kind of stuff, it doesn't have to be. So restrictive that people don't wanna do business, you know, but we should be seeing granite curbing.
Can I make a comment? I'm out of business. There's a critical shortage of housing, there is nothing, no such thing as affordable housing. And we all like to see, I'm not gonna use an exaggerated term, we all like to see palaces, aren't they beautiful to drive by? And nobody can afford housing right now, adding granite curbing to residential stuff. Would be, that's been the wrong direction.
I don't think we would be seeing curbing.
I thought you said something.
No, like, but, hey, we're first talking about commercial stuff. Yeah, um.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, well. Yeah, I'm not sure how we're, what.
Well, sure, I mean, uh, maybe to make a recommendations on the board.
I'll second it. Motion made, seconded, all in favor.
This motion is to recommend the town board to establish many.
Yes.
Design standards.
For commercial.
Somebody else wants to answer.
I just had to understand what I was seconding.
So Erin has made a motion, and it was seconded by Richard. All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous, it's approved. Any other new additions?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I'll say.
Are you sure there are any?